We call the meeting to an end. I would like to welcome each and every one here tonight. And if you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain faithful and proud of our president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're turning the meeting over to Dr. Collins for the election of the chairman.
All right, so what time for the fact? So, open up the floor for nominations for chair. Any nominations?
Marty Burleson.
All right. Have a person, a second, any other? All right, all those in favor? No, by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
I would like to thank the board for allowing me to serve another year as chairman. And if y'all, like I've always said, we're always open to... My phone's... I answered my phone. I sent it to retire my tax matches and my eval. You all know that. And I appreciate each and every one of you for serving. And I just appreciate all of it. Thank you. Next, we will open up the nominations for vice chairman. Do we have any nomination for...
I have an Avis Farrell.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion by Mr. Davidson, a second by Mr. John, that Avis Farrell be elected vice chairman? Any other nomination? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Avis. Next, we need to elect a Tennessee legislative network representative. Ms. Lawrence has been doing this, and she's decided she's going to step down from that. Would anyone like to do that? Do we have any nominations for that? I think Mr. Melinda Rozelle would be good for it.
I have a second there.
Mr. Rozelle? You would do a fine job. That's the reason I recommend you. Nominate Mr. Farrell. Mr. Vincent. Mr. Farrell Vincent, you've been nominated. Second by Mr. Shipton. Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye? Those opposed, no. Mr. Vincent, congratulations.
Thank you.
Your next time. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda that's presented? Some of the motion by Mr. Davidson, a second by Mr. John. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Are there any additions to the agenda? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to remove any item for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve it? Make that motion. Motion by Mr. Vincent, a second by Mr. Farrell. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passed. Superintendent update, Dr. Collins.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wanted to share a few updates with everyone before we get started with the rest of the meeting. I thought these might be relevant since they stemmed from the calls and emails that I've received over the last few weeks. Although, most of these can also be found on our website, I wanted to make sure that I share them on camera as well for those maybe who have not looked at the website. Before I do that, though, I want to recognize our new public safety director, Mr. Poncho Chumley, is here with us this evening. Mr. Poncho, it's hard for me now to call you sheriff. Mr. Poncho, there's a sheriff right back there in the back of Mr. Davidson. Thank you. Director Chumley will be working with both the county and the school system to assist in safety issues and in conjunction with Glenn and all the municipal police chiefs and the county sheriff to coordinate our school resource officers. So, we're in partnership with Mayor Huffman on this, and we think it'll be a good thing for him to come around. He's going to look for, you know, safety issues within all our buildings, coordinate things with our school resource officers, and we're really looking forward to him taking that position. So, thank you for being here, very kind. We appreciate it. Also, we appreciate our school board attorney, Mr. Shields, for being here this evening. Good to see you, Mr. Shields. Thank you. So, we are still currently under the mask mandate as sit by this body at the August meeting. I'm just trying to keep everybody up to date. The governor's executive order number 84, which allows parents to opt their children out of masking through October the 5th, 2021, is being recognized. To date, 16.9% of our students have turned in documentation from parents to be opted out. Also, a reminder for parents, masks do not have to be worn on the playgrounds when eating or drinking or when social distancing can occur. That's our current mandate. Our laboners, nurses, and administrators are coordinating the quarantine process as per CDC and Health Department guidance. Although, our first effort was to leave this process to the Health Department, they are at least four to six days behind, which does not lend itself to us keeping the appropriate students in the building and keeping them safe. So, we have taken over or at least helping with that role with our laboners nursing staff. I've seen multiple emails and social media posts regarding the board's procedure at the August board meeting for enacting the mask mandate. Since that time, Chairman Burleson and I have both reached out to our own attorneys and the Tennessee School Board Association attorney for feedback. As per this feedback, everything was done appropriately, and it was done legally. Do you have a comment on that, Mr. Shields, if you're here? All good. Thank you. If numbers generated a need to shut down the school system, we would have to use stockpile days. I've been trying to send you all that information as it comes from the state. As in other years, we have 13 days that are built into our calendar for inclement weather. Those are the stockpile days. So, in order to shut it down right now across the district, we'd have to use a stockpile day to do that, and that means that everything is shut down. We, as the local education agency or the LEA, already have the authority to provide remote instruction to students who have been quarantined or tested positive in order to help them complete assignments while they're absent. So, we can already do that for those who are absent or sick or they're quarantined. This is temporary, of course, and does not have the same impact as being in the classroom. As you know, and most of us have talked about, we want the kids in the classroom. There is a waiver request form available, which I can utilize to apply for the temporary shutdown of a class or a school if the numbers warrant that. If this were to occur, remember that all extracurricular activities would close as well. So, if a waiver were submitted and then granted by the commissioner, and that's what we chose to do for a school, remember, it can't be for the whole district, but it can be for a class or a school. If we chose to do that, then everything would shut down. Every extracurricular activity and everything would be closed for that school for that temporary time period. And I believe the limit on that would be seven days, and then we'd have to go something else. And basically, what the commissioner has said is, we have to be able to prove on that waiver that we simply cannot run the school. So, that would mainly be a staffing issue and other things as well. This window has recently reopened to apply for virtual learning. You know, there were about 57 virtual schools across the state right now that were okay during the summer. That window has recently reopened as soon as earlier this week. However, there are multiple things we would need to consider before we thought about applying for something like that. Number one, numerous people across the district and state misused this option last year, and learning suffered because of it. Number two, adequate high-speed internet in this county is sporadic at best, so many of our students would not have the same access to instructional content as others would. And three, our teachers were stretched far too thin last year, and I hesitate to request that of them again. Each building has an additional teacher now through the SRF funding, and that person is attempting to coordinate the learning loss from last year and then deal with things from this year as well. Lastly, I want to remind everyone to visit our website and then look at the info that we have provided there. Many of the questions that we get are actually answered on this website, and as we get more questions, we try to update that website with those new FAQs and the new guidance that we have. So, let me end by saying this. I appreciate everything that this board is doing for our kids. During this unprecedented time, you've had to step up and make some difficult and sometimes unpopular decisions, and you certainly have my respect and that of my office. Anybody have any questions for me before I turn this over to our director of instruction? Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Dr. Burleson?
Mr. Chair. I want to start tonight by recognizing our Teacher of the Month. So, last year, you'll remember that American Fidelity sponsored the Teacher of the Month program, and we started that back up again in August. And so, we want to congratulate Ms. Christine Garzoniyo. I probably messed her name up, but I think I got it correct. From Otoka Elementary, she's the art teacher there, and she was selected as the American Fidelity Teacher of the Month. And as part of that nomination process, her principal, Ms. Lisa Rose, who's here tonight, wrote that Ms. Garzoniyo is a fabulous art teacher. The students all love going to her classes each day because she actively engages them in fun and exciting activities that tie art into the general ed curriculum. She seeks out grants on her own to enhance the art program and regularly incorporates technology into her lessons. So, Ms. Garzoniyo, if you would come forward so that we can recognize you, along with Mr. Grant Stelton from American Fidelity. He's going to present you a photo. This is Ms. Christine Garzoniyo.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I call her Ms. Heiser because that was her name when I was her principal at Otoka Elementary. And she, y'all, she is a fabulous teacher, and we have lots just like her in Tipton County schools. We are so very fortunate that we have a great teaching staff. The second thing I want to just draw your attention to in your packet, there's a flyer for college and career, all right? So, we want to make sure that that gets said out loud so the public knows it is posted on the webpage. The schools have communicated that as well, and it's been put out on social media. So, that is coming up September 28th, and that's for all schools in the district. It's hosted at Brighton High School, but it's for all schools, not just Brighton High School students. And then the last thing I want to give an update on, you know that we've implemented our one-to-one initiative this year, and we are excited about all the technology that our students and teachers are using in the classroom. And I want to give you an update on what equipment has been purchased since January 2020. So, Chromebooks, 11,374. Laptops, 192. Now, this doesn't count all the equipment that we already have. This is new equipment. Desktops, 223. Interactive display boards, if you're not sure what I'm talking about, it's the thing that you see on the wall here. We've purchased 253 of those. Cameras for teachers to use in the classroom to record lessons and Zoom and all those things that they've been doing. 435 charging carts for the Chromebooks, 312 of those that are scattered around the district. 47 new projectors, 31 new iPads, 63 new scanners, and 30 access points. Of course, that helps with the Wi-Fi signal. But we just appreciate what you all have done in improving and funding for all of our technology. If you visit a classroom, you'll see that students are engaged in learning, and teachers are using that technology to enhance their instruction. And on the board tonight, I've been scrolling pictures of some of the exciting things that are going on in our classrooms. Mr. Chair, that's all I have unless someone has a question.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Dr. Burleson.
Thank you.
Dr. Spitzer, direct operator.
I'm going to yield my time to Ms. Sherri Arbroe and Dr. Burleson.
Thank you. Ms. Arbroe?
Thank you. All right, I'm just going to give you a little bit of COVID update, but I'm going to give you the good news first. One of the positive things that we've been able to do this year is offer testing in school for our faculty and staff here, and we've received a lot of positive comments for being able to have that in the building. So, teachers aren't having to leave work, go somewhere. If they've been exposed or experiencing symptoms of COVID, they can actually get a test right there at the school. So, it's a lot timelier, and since August 26th, we've done 55 tests. And out of those COVID tests we've done for faculty, we've had five positives out of 55. So, that's good, but it's also helped those other 50 feel a little bit better about staying in the classroom. So, we haven't had to quarantine them for their exposures. Right now, our student positives, since August the 9th, we've had 703 positive students in the school system. We have quarantined 2,752 students, and that's been since August the 9th. Last year altogether, we had 417 positive students, and we quarantined 3,709 in the whole school year. This year so far, we have 40 positive staff members. That number's actually lower than what we had last year. I've started doing a little bit of study on close contacts and positives. How many students that are close contacts in the classroom that actually turned positive during their quarantine? And right now, we have 38 district-wide students that were actually as contacts in the classroom that we know probably got COVID from the classroom.
Is that 38 out of the several thousand you mentioned here?
Yes. Yes, sure is. And that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
I think it's going to come up, but what's the governing authority that requires us to quarantine?
The CDC and the Department of Health.
I was thinking about that, Sherri, today. Do we add anything to what the CDC and Department of Health have to say? So, we're going strictly by that? We haven't added anything on as far as quarantines?
We have not added anything.
All right, I did have a couple of questions for you. Now, that was the one that you answered about quarantine. I was wondering if you would know that because I've been wondering that myself about quarantining kids, how they get the COVID. Do you have any idea of all the children that have been, staff really, that have tested positive? How many became seriously ill, children and adults?
I don't know that many.
Do you know how many had to be hospitalized?
No, sir. I know we have one hospitalized now.
Gentlemen, for the next couple of months, if it's possible, several months, I'd like to know... I mean, I think if you could call, you could call a principal now and ask how many kids you got in the hospital due to COVID. I'd like for Sherri maybe to report those numbers future dates if you don't mind. Update, hospital cases and... Children or staff hospital, I would say.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Arbroe? I don't know if it's for Ms. Arbroe, but I was curious, what's our absentee rate?
It's 11.8, maybe? Yesterday was 12.7, today's 11.8, I think.
Still going down.
Percent, it's still going down, yes, sir. Friday before last, it was 26.
I know that's all absentee, but percentage, do you think it might be COVID or... Do you think it?
Probably. I mean, what happens a lot of times...
Count the quarantines.
Yeah, when you count your quarantines and your positives together, and then those students who are sent home who had symptoms, that's probably, yeah, it's probably 50.
Thank you, Ms. Arbroe.
Okay. All right, and...
I want to read something about a policy before Dr. Cook speaks.
Okay.
It's been some erroneous information put out on social media about Dr. Cook having more time than anybody else to speak, which is untrue, okay? Individual speaking to the board shall address remarks to the chairman and may direct questions to individual board members or staff members only if upon approval of the chairman. Each person speaking shall state his name, address, and subject of presentation. Remarks will be limited to five minutes unless time is extended by the board. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disrupted or does not adhere to the board rules. Erroneous information put on social media today about Dr. Cook, aware and respected professional in our county, was going to have longer speech, untrue. Dr. Cook, you have to speak.
My name is Buckey Cook, and I reside at 134 Bexton Lane, Brighton, Tennessee. What I've been asked to speak about tonight is with regards to COVID and my practice and also with regards to children. I'm going to run through basically some questions that I was sent prior to meeting. First being, what am I seeing in my practice currently regarding COVID, especially with kids? In summation, high numbers that aren't going down, sicker patients, younger patients, and unvaccinated patients. High numbers. I had tons of folks from Halloween of last year to January of this year, essentially had zero for two months, and now the numbers are worse than the first wave. Sicker patients, for example, one Monday, I saw five new cases. Four already were at pneumonia, and two of them were healthy 30-year-olds. We're also seeing increase in deaths. In our practice, we went from one to two per month, and now we're having at least one patient in our practice a month that is succumbing to COVID. Younger patients, March of last year to summer of this year, I saw zero kids with COVID. Now, seeing multiple down to age of four, which was one that was brought home by his brother from school. Four unvaccinated. I've treated over 100 patients with COVID since the vaccination was available. All three have been unvaccinated. As far as I'm aware, all of our patients in our practice that have been hospitalized or died were unvaccinated. It may not kill you, but it may make you wish you were dead. I'm seeing what's called long-hauler syndrome, multiple complications, blood clots in the lung, lung and heart damage. And also, there's rising cases of what's called multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. You can Google that and read some numbers on it. All of this is in corollary of what we're seeing in the state and nationwide. Last week, 250,000 kids tested positive. It was the biggest weekly surge. Weekly COVID hospitalization rate, Mr. Vincent asked about that, was five times the rate ending August 14th that it was June 26th. 10 times for kids zero to 40 years old. Since July 4th, pediatric hospitalizations are up 600%, and amongst the hospitalization rate amongst unvaccinated adolescents is 10 times that vaccinated. Let's narrow it down to Tennessee and Tipton County. Tennessee kids make up 15% of the cases. 13 states exceed that. Tennessee is one, in fact, the third highest in the country. The average rate during the pandemic has been about 6,700 per 100,000 kids. Eight states lead the way. Tennessee is one. Tennessee and South Carolina are double the average rate. With regards to Tipton County, outside what I would call the big six counties, only 12 counties, according to the Tennessee Department of Health, have more pediatric cases presently than Tipton County, and we're a low vaccination state, and we're one of the lowest vaccinated counties in the whole state. 30.25% are fully vaccinated, which makes us 18th worst out of the 95 counties. So, in summation, surgeon cases, especially among kids, sicker patients, hospitalizations are way up, overwhelmingly an unvaccinated population. My opinion, Tipton County is a perfect storm, recipe for disaster, a breeding ground for COVID. I've been sounding that alarm for quite some time on social media, much to my detriment, as Mr. Burleson pointed out. But this isn't just about our children, it's about our community. And I'll give you an example. This is, you can look up, this is one of the most well-respected papers that we will, as doctors, look at from the CDC, the morbidity and mortality weekly report. This is dated from September, and it's about an outbreak that occurred in Marion County, California, back in May. And actually, what happened was there was an element, this is a highly vaccinated community, 70-plus percent. They had a mask mandate, they had the kids socially distanced. That elementary school teacher that was unvaccinated, she came to work sick, continued to work for two days sick, finally got a test, then went home. On occasion, despite the mask mandate, she would read aloud to the class while they were indoors. And at the beginning of May 23rd, additional cases were reported amongst staff members, students, parents, and siblings connected to the school. They did whole genome sequencing to know that this all went back to this one teacher. Among the 24 students in her class, 22 who were ineligible for vaccination because of their age, got tested. 12 were positive. The attack rate was 80% for the first few rows, 25% for the back. And then, six of 18 students in the separate grade at that same school, also too young for vaccination, turned positive, eight additional cases, all in parents of siblings and students in those grades. So, they can take it home to mom, dad, grandma, and grandpa. And if that's what could happen in our schools and communities, or this happened in a community in which there was a mask mandate, high vaccination rate, what do you think could happen in Tipton County, Tennessee?
Why hasn't it hit the Amish communities?
And so, Steve, I heard Steve Gaines one time, or say recently this weekend, an army invading the land, you don't just keep watching football on ESPN. And so, what weapons are at our disposal? Good hygiene, staying home if you're sick, masks and vaccines. Do vaccines work? Yes. Are they safe for kids? Yes. People are concerned about myocarditis, but you have a 1,400-time greater risk of getting myocarditis from COVID than from the vaccine if you're a child or adolescent. Masks, do they work? Are they safe? Do they work? The short answer, yes. The long answer, yes, yes, and yes. And so, I provided this for each member of the board. This is from Texas Tech University Health Science Center, and talks about the Delta variant. One person can infect up to six people. Wearing a mask will drop that to 0.5. On the second page, it shows you that when you go from 0 to 80% masking, that literally there's zero infections over the course of 12 days and even up to 45 days. The third page will show you that social distancing alone does not work. So, 0% all the way to 80% social distancing, 0% to 0% wearing masks was very high, 80% wearing masks still, there was very, very few cases.
Dr. Cook, your five minutes is up. How you done a great presentation, what great stuff you've been here. Are there any questions for Dr. Cook from the boardroom?
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Uh huh. Dr. Cook, first of all, just to let everybody know, Dr. Cook has been my physician for probably 25 years. I taught him everything, you know. Anyway, I love the man. I have a question for you. Would you say the number of symptoms or cases from 0 to 18, 1 to 18, whatever, would you say the majority of children, would you say the majority of the children you've seen had had light, moderate, or severe symptoms if you had to divvy that up?
I'd say moderate.
And what would moderate entail, do you think, for a child?
Varying things. It could be that they're lethargic, could be they're not eating and drinking like normal, but those are probably going to be the main ones, not taking their medication. In this case, the four-year-old, it was moderately ill. He had seizure disorder, and so, we was borderline having to go to the hospital because he couldn't take his medication because he was sick. And so, he would continue, and he would have at least go in the hospital so the seizure medicine could be administered, I think.
Thank you, sir. Any other question? Thank you, Dr. Cook. Financial report, Mr. Williams, starting.
Evening, gentlemen. I received great acclaim from my brief presentation last month. I'm prepared to tell you that's not going to happen tonight. Longer. You should have in your packets the financial report, ending month, month ending August 31st, 2021. We're going to start there, if that's okay with you all. We'll start with the General Purpose School Fund, number 141. For the month of August, our revenue is a little over $7.1 million, and our expenditures are a little over 5.2. In the 142 federal projects budget, our revenue has been a little over $327,000 with expenditures just over $457,000. In the 143 central cafeteria budget, revenue is at $403,000, expenditures at $429,000. And then, the fourth and final budget, the capital projects, 177. There's been no activity on revenue, obviously, as previous discussions have had it. We're trying to expend those funds by the end of this fiscal year. Our remaining balance, they're just shy of $100,000, and that remains the projects that were done in Brighton. Behind that, you should find a packet of papers that should say in the top-left corner, August 2nd of 2001. These are all funding decisions this board has made in the past, but this is the final document that went before the Tipton County Finance Administration Committee in August and was subsequently voted on. These are the amendments where we made some adjustments in the support services line item. No effect change to fund balance. We received some grants that took care of some funding that we initially thought some time ago was going to be necessary, but through the federal projects, we were not having to spend it, so we put it to better use in other places. One thing I will tell the board, this is kind of a national thing going on, we have spent and added to our cabinet of insurances, cyber insurance to protect our infrastructure. Mr. Kevin Cullen, kudos to him. He's worked really hard on that over the last little while, so that is in that amendment as well. The last one you'll see there is the capital outlay amendments. We all discussed that. These are the projects that you all have been discussing long before I got here in July with Dr. Collins and the board. Moving on to the next packet, you should see a page that looks like this. It's color-coded. I want to update you because, as you all know, there's a lot of funding dropping from the federal level and... from the federal level and federal through states to many of the local education agencies. Ours, no exception. They are updating this document regularly, so some of the numbers that we've seen or that we've dealt with are going to change, and I wanted you to be all, all of you to be educated. If you look on the back of it, there's been a number of grants that have had its kind of in a gray area. So when you hear some of these fancy names and words, I just want you to be able to reference them. And when you see these account codes in the budget amendments that I'm giving you, I want you to be able to correlate that back to that. This is an updated sheet, I'm sure you've seen in the past. It's just significantly had additions made to it. Which leads me to the next packet that was behind that. As you all know, I know the discussions have happened in this board being long before I got here regarding ESSER funding, ESSER 2 and ESSER 3 more specifically. That funding has made its way to our jurisdiction, of course, the funding has been set. We're, we know what our projects are. We've submitted them through the state, we're waiting on confirmation that they would allow us to do that, which I'll carry you back to this sheet for just a second. Some of the questions come as to what will the grant pay for? In that fourth column, where it says expenditure account categories, that tells every jurisdiction where they can spend the money. So we don't get to choose, they get, they tell us, and we fit our needs inside of those boxes, so to speak. Does that make sense? And so when you look through these next few budget amendments, which we, Dr. Combs and I presented Tuesday of this week, you all have been made aware of these in the past with ESSER 3, but they, we'll see in just a second. We'll start 141, but spend a little time on 142. So let's jump into 141. There were some adjustments made where our teachers, in order to address literacy, received a grant to go to some training this summer. That money has made its way into the budget this year, that would happen over summer. And so that money is being moved into the 141, 7,100 series for regular instruction. No change to fund balance, with the exception of the addition of grant money. The next series that you'll see, should the top center will be the 7,200 support services. Those are adjustments made for contracts throughout the budget. Again, no change to fund balance in that line item. You all were aware of those forthcoming. And the final one that I want to spend a little, just a little, a couple of seconds on here just to make you aware, because it's increased our federal projects budget by 26 million this month. We originally 5.6 billion budgeted through our standard, what I would call standard consolidated. These are our federal projects that are starting to fall through through the ESSER 2 funding, which is rollover, consolidated rollover, ESSER 3, Carl Perkins Reserve, and the list goes on. And so you'll see those revenue numbers there at the top section, and you can correlate every one of those back to, they're kind of identified now the comptroller sets a specific revenue code so that we can track the money, and also track the projects, going back to that spreadsheet I told you the new addition's on, so we can watch where that money's being spent and what it's being spent for. And the money's been plugged into the budget. These are items that you've already heard of previously in approved projects. This is just what it looks like on paper. And so I anticipate we'll start as soon as we get the green light on the projects spending the money. I will tell you also, we received two more since we presented to United Finance Committee. We received two more notifications, the grant receiving through the American Rescue Plan, which is the preschool grant, and the IDEA grant, which we'll be presenting next month at the county legislative body, and there may be more. But I want to get these before you tonight so that you all can hear them, so that we can have them again like we typically do, that you hear them, then we take them to the finance, they vote on. The preschool instructional grant from the American Rescue Plan is going to add approximately $37,951.09 to our federal projects budget. And the American Rescue Plan IDEA project number 903 is going to add about a half a million, well, actually, to be exact, let's be exact, $569,238.14. And so these are to address preschool programs and item one programs. So that's kind of where we are currently. I anticipate there to be more grants coming in this month because the federal money and the projects are starting to be approved. And so we will get those as we typically do to you. But I wanted to cover those tonight. Are there any questions?
Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented? Make the motion, motion by Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Jones. Are there any questions, bud? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll carry them to the county commission in the October meeting, and we'll be ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you, sir. So this Cindy Hogg is watching online, and so I haven't answered your question for this month that you asked. Let's see. Three children in ICU, one is at St. Jude, and the other two were at Labona. And so there's three.
They should say the ages, by chance?
Um, they're all elementary, that's all I know.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Those are kids from our school system?
Yes.
Recognition was approved for petitions, Mr. Richard Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gray, would you state your name, address, and subject of your presentation, please?
Yes, my name is Richard Gray, address is 2004 Hillsong Lane, Brighton, Tennessee. I'm regarding infecting this mask.
Okay.
71,829 people to the Alabama-Mississippi game this past Saturday. An enclosed stable with no social distancing and hardly any masks in sight, but yet our children, the least susceptible to COVID, will be required to wear masks in desks, hallways, buses, etc., if the board has their way. That thought is comprised of nothing but more than a lack of research because masks in and of themselves are ineffective. Dating back as early as 1981, a five-year study by Dr. Neil Oll recorded that wearing a mask did not reduce incidence of contamination of wounds during surgical procedures. The facts of the results suggested that wearing no mask correlated to the greatest reduction to contaminations when surgeons worked in silence. In more recent statements by Dr. Fauci, he quoted saying, "Wearing a mask might make people feel a little better, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think it is." During the 2020 lockdown mask mandates, it was reported that states mandated masks had 9.6 million confirmed cases of COVID, equating to 27 cases per 100,000 people per day. States without a mandate produced 5.7 million confirmed cases, averaging to 17 cases per day. This was a known difference of 10 cases less per day where mandates were not in effect. Earlier this year, Dr. Fauci stated it's common sense to wear masks instead of, two masks instead of one. However, the charm study conducted by the US Marine Corps published in the New England Journal of Medicine, whereby recruits consistently wore double-layer masks and socially distanced, still record a spread in the most heavily monitored for compliance and restricted military environments. The CDC posted a study more than 90,000 students in 169 Georgia schools from November 16th to December 11th comparing COVID incidents in schools with certain mitigation measures compared to other schools without those measures. Per the CDC, it did not produce statistically significant results, and that a mask requirement of students failed to show independent benefit. Michael Osterholm, an epidemiologist and former COVID advisor to Joe Biden, and Scott Lee, former commissioner of FDA, both noted limited effectiveness of masks, including cloth. Celine Gallagher, infectious disease epidemiologist at NYU, who advised Biden's transition team on the COVID-19 policy, reported that when masks are worn by both source and receiver, they provide just an estimated 27 minutes of protection from an infectious dose of SARS-CoV-2. Professor Yvonne Forsyth of the Department of Infectious Diseases at the University of Sydney stated masks become non-consequential and do not work after 20 minutes due to saturation from the moisture in your breath causing droplets to pass through. Another CDC study reported that there is no significant effect of face masks in the transmission of laboratory-inflicted influenza, and we hold these findings to be extrapolated to SARS-CoV-2. A pediatric immunologist in Britain stated about the Delta variant, "By the numbers coming out of Britain, it continues to suggest that Delta is not more virulent or cause more severe illness. Despite being more contagious, it is not biologically plausible that the same variant is somehow more dangerous in kids in the U.S. than it is in the UK. Your own golden standard of health organizations have limited face masks provide little of any protection against aerosol viruses. Surgical masks are not respiratory protection devices, the FDA. The use of the face mask alone is not sufficient to provide an adequate level of protection against COVID-19, the WHO. Surgical masks do not provide the wearer with a reliable level of protection from inhaling smaller air-worn particles and is not considered respiratory protection, the CDC. A COVID particle measured about 100 nanometers, a surgical mask measured about 1,000 times larger, and surgical, and cloth masks measured about 500,000 times larger per Dr. Colin Axon of the Strategic Advisory Group on Experts on Immunization, the advising of WHO. Dr. Axon says, "Imagine marbles being fired at builder scaffolding. Some might hit the pole and rebound, but obviously most will fly through." I could go on and on and on, but in closing, I understand the board has 27,745,002 reasons, aka daughters, to continue to push an emergency that is just not statistically real based on my aforementioned data along with countless other studies, and masks are the tool to keep the narrative alive. However, remember this, COVID-19 is not your enemy, fear is your enemy. We will not die one day sooner or one day later than what God has planned for us. But he did not create us to live in fear. The Bible says, "God has not given us the spirit of fear, but of power, of love, and of a sound mind."
Amen.
Constantly masking our children only illustrates that we may fear a virus that has only a 0.002% mortality rate nationwide for adults, and a 0.0000067% chance mortality rate among children per the CDC as of 9/8/21. You must stop making our children live in fear, instead empower them with love and knowledge that will sustain them throughout their lives. That is what leaders do, and that's what our kids deserve.
Are there any, Mr. Smith, if you have a question?
No, I was just saying. I don't know.
I do. The $27 million?
Yes.
What are you referring to there, the ESSER grant?
The ESSER grants, yeah, from the COVID relief funding.
Can you speak to that real quick? Because that doesn't have anything to do with the mask.
It doesn't have anything to do with the mask mandate. Didn't come with the COVID, which...
It came from COVID, not a mask.
To keep an emergency going, there has to show an emergency. Thus, keeping masks shows an emergency.
I just want to make it clear that this school board is not benefiting from wearing, from mandating a mask.
Okay. I appreciate it, Mark, I do.
We still get to save the same little bit of money every month.
Well, it's a big chunk of money, the 27 million wasn't a big sum of money, but it had nothing to do with whether we, we had a mask mandate.
Yeah, and you're right, that amount of money comes whether we mask or not. So that's what we're using for roofs and all that stuff. But yeah, it's a, but that amount is correct, yes, sir. Okay, I appreciate that.
And we're going to do a lot of good things with it.
I hope so. I have faith in y'all's whole wheel, we just need to, I've got, I've got current numbers. I know I'm out of time, I have current numbers from the U.S. and Tennessee and Tipton County. Not, not percentages, but the actual numbers as of dated last, I checked them this morning, dated last night, but...
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Bird. Mr. Graham?
Oh, you're fine. Mr. Scott?
Scott, I have a question, if you would, if you don't mind.
No question from the audience, but not to him, maybe to the board?
It is to the board.
Okay, go ahead.
With reference to that 27 million, has anything been done to the schools as far as proven scientific stuff, as far as ventilation or anything else to help mitigate COVID?
Yes, UV lighting in our HVAC systems. We're currently finishing up a roof project, we have mildew and stuff like that, but yeah, I mean, those things, yes, sir.
I think last year we spent $250,000 having all the schools sanitized before they came in. And that was prior to any ESSER money.
The biggest ones, specifically speaking to air quality, is probably the HVAC changeouts and the ultraviolet, I don't blame it on any of your, the ultraviolet light we're putting into the systems and those kind of things, yes, sir.
Have all the schools been equipped with those?
All of them, but two currently, and those are in process. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Next up is Dr. Laura Huffman. Dr. Huffman, would you please state your name, address, and the subject of presentation?
I will, and I have some information for the board.
Okay.
I guess you guys can put it on record. Well, actually, it's just to put on record for the meeting.
Okay. Okay.
All right, my name is Laura Huffman, I live at 396 Downing Road. I'm a born native of Tipton County and graduated here. I've been practicing as a psychiatrist for the past 20 years. I went to the University of Tennessee for my medical degree, and I practiced, I did my psychiatry training in Arkansas and in Arizona. I did serve in the Air Force as a psychiatrist in Afghanistan. My goal tonight is to inform the board members that there are some risks of mask use and that you can't put a one-size-fits-all order on a whole group of children. I do have your board leadership code of conduct, and so I know that it's important for you to know these things. Your code of conduct says that you will represent at all times the entire school community. You will refuse to represent special interest or partisan politics. Your code of conduct also says that you will make decisions only after a complete discussion of items at a board meeting, and that you will attend all board meetings and become informed concerning the issues to be considered. That's why it's important for you to know both sides of every story. I want to real quick talk about concrete thinking and abstract thinking. This is very important if you're going to make medical decisions. Concrete thinking is everything is black and white, or all or nothing. It's linear. It's a good way to think, but it's not everything. Abstract thinking is a more complex way of thinking. Your mind can hold two concepts that seem like they're different, but you can hold it in your mind at the same time, and this is a big area of gray. And we use both types of thinking for medicine, and you can't use just one. I want you to know that there's significant discord in the medical community regarding COVID. You might have only heard one side of the story, but let me tell you, I practice in three states. We do not agree, doctors do not agree on COVID. One of the things that I gave you for the board is called the Great Barrington Declaration. This is a statement that's done by three very renowned epidemiologists. It's signed by 850,000 other practitioners, immunologists, epidemiologists, doctors, scientists. What this says, the Great Barrington Declaration, it says they have grave concerns about the damaging physical and mental health impacts of the prevailing COVID-19 policy. It says they recommend focused protection. This came out in the fall after they had had time to look at all of the numbers. They recommend focused protection for healthy people. They recommend that everybody go back to life and live your life as a healthy, whole individual and get natural immunity, which is the most robust. I also want you to know about some folks out there who are warning about some of the dangers of face masks. This is a German neurologist, she spends her time working on brain damage, things that happen to people's brain. She studies neurodegenerative problems. She's saying oxygen deprivation causes permanent neurological damage. We have studies far, far before COVID ever came along, and those studies show us, we've studied surgeons for a lot of years, we've studied the flu for a lot of years, and those studies show us that although very small percentages, your oxygen level goes down under the mask, the carbon dioxide level goes up, it's proven. I would love to go over the studies with you, but I don't have time. I only have five minutes, but it is lower. What happens if you have a low amount of oxygen and a higher amount of carbon dioxide? Stress, cardiovascular disease, hardening of the arteries. It's not good. I'm a doctor of the brain, it's not good. This is not all a black and white issue, it's very complex. And if you're going to practice medicine, you better know about it. All right, so what do these folks tell us? They tell us that under these masks, because of this lower oxygen and higher carbon dioxide, people start to have headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, decreased concentration, decreased cognitive functioning. In the German registry, where parents and teachers reported, it's data from 26,000 students, 60% reported irritability, 53% reported headache, 50% reported decreased concentration, 49% reported decreased happiness, 44% reluctant to go to school, 37% fatigue. Okay, what else is important that you need to know about masks? The World Health Organization says, there's a separate guideline, they put this out in August of 2020. They said, or policymakers, given the limited evidence that the benefits of mask use in children, you must weigh that against the potential harms associated with the mask. Real quickly, I'd like to tell you one more sidebar. So even the World Health Organization says you better think about the negatives and the positives, and given that the positives are not very high. All right, last thing I would tell you about, children in the school system, a lot of them are healthy, they don't have problems, but a lot of them do, and especially elementary-age children, this is when they're learning to speak, this is when they're learning to read, this is when they're trying to develop. It's very important, it's hard enough to grow up without all the adults wearing masks. It's exceedingly hard to grow up with all the adults running around in an episode or atmosphere of fear. Okay, it's stressful to them. The first year was one thing, now it's another. You are talking about a much longer timeframe that you're exposing these children. You are talking about a much longer timeframe that you're exposing these children, and people have. In our school system, in our school system in Tipton County, we have 109 kids with autism, we have 120 with intellectual disability, we have 358 with speech impairment. That's just the ones we know of. How many do we have with anxiety? How many do we have with claustrophobia? How many do we have with chronic headaches that masks worsen? So, all I want to say to you is that there's minimal proof, even the, even the World Health Organization says the evidence for mask use is weak, whereas some other things like ventilation is moderate. And so all I want to tell you is, you know, get your medical malpractice paid up, because you're practicing medicine, and you're not taking each child individually and on a case-by-case basis. And you can harm children, you can harm children. So I don't want to hear that if even one child is safe. I want to tell you that you don't realize how complicated what this situation is. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
On any questions for Dr. Huffman?
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your service, very much. And also, uh, since you're looking at it from the head portion, how does wearing masks, if you could sum it up in 25 words, how does wearing masks affect children emotionally?
That's a great question. Um, there's actually a study here that I thought, and it's recent. And so what they've looked at is, does it change the doctor-patient relationship if the doctor's wearing a mask? Forty-six, forty-six percent of the children, there were around 400 children that looked at it, uh, said they were afraid of the doctor. Um, and so, it's a, I'm telling, I agree with Mr. Gray, I totally agree with Mr. Gray. Children need to see healthy, calm...
Would you please stick with the question? Answer the question and move on, please.
I'm answering it, it's just a really good longer type answer.
Okay, go ahead.
So, fear is dangerous for children. Stress is dangerous for children and humans. And, uh, healthy, strong, uh, competent, intelligent adults that can look at that child and say, hey, we may have a problem, but we can handle this. It's better atmosphere for a child.
How do we, how do we develop our natural immunity?
Sir?
How do we develop natural?
Well, if you don't have any, uh, pre-existing conditions. Uh, the data that we're getting out of Israel and some of the other most highly vaccinated countries, the data shows that by being exposed to COVID and having the virus and fighting it off on your own in a normal, healthy fashion, gives you a better and more robust immunity than other options. I'm not suggesting, you know, I, I, for children especially, the data is weaker, um, in terms of children. The risk to children is very low. There is real risk, and there are real children in the hospital, and we don't deny that. I'm just asking you to understand that it's complex. It's not such an easy decision as you may think it is.
We know it's not easy.
Yeah.
I can promise you, there's...
And I think those children...
I can call you at 2:00, a few mornings, and let you know how not easy it is.
I think those children, uh, deserve being evaluated by a physician to see if they need, uh, you know, to not have a mask on. And I think they deserve to allow their parents to make the choice.
Thank you, Dr. Huffman.
This choice is far-reaching.
Next is, uh, Mr. David Gill. Mr. Gill, would you like to state your name, address, and subject of presentation, please?
Thank you, uh, David Gill, 343 Britain Lane in Tulsa, Tennessee. I'm here to speak with you about, uh, your authority as a board for mask mandates. Last thing, I spoke with you about mask mandate in schools. At the time you voted to make masks optional, you told me your concern is that if you follow CDC guidelines, it'll protect you from a lawsuit. Just a quick side note, guidelines are not law, they are advice. And you have to have authority to act on that advice. As I told you back in May, there was a court case in Williamson County about masks in schools dismissed. The court found the case had no standing to receive a judgment under Tennessee law because the damages were self-inflicted by the parents pulling their kids out of school. Although the case was being dismissed, the judge stated the following. "The court is not convinced as a matter of law that WCBOE acted within its statutory authority at the time of promulgated its face covering requirements." The judge also stated, "The court cannot find as a matter of law defendants have acted within the authority given to them by the legislature when enacting face covering requirements." You've had four months since then to look at statutory authority that you have, and alternatively don't have. Since it appears that you've not done your due diligence in knowing and understanding your statutory authority when it comes to requiring masks, I've taken the liberty of researching for you. Statutory authority refers to the powers and duties assigned to a government official or agency through law passed by Congress or state legislature. What that means is that your authority comes from statute passed in the Tennessee Code by Tennessee State Legislature. You get your authority as a school board directly from statute under the Tennessee Board of Education. As such, all of your authority before your duties comes from the Tennessee Board of Education. Any authority that you think you have that comes from outside the statutes from the Tennessee Board of Education does not exist. The only statute from the Tennessee Board of Education relates to health is Policy 4.204, the coordinated health, or the coordinated school health program. In this program, there are eight areas of authority, and none of them relate to regulating anything that could even be construed as a mask or a public health policy. Any mandate, or any mandate of any kind. The most it allows anyone to do is a school nurse to treat a child or an employee for an injury. You do not have the statutory authority to require face coverings or make mandates of any kind.
Mr. Gill, if we didn't, we wouldn't.
The Constitution of the State of Tennessee, Article 1, Section 1, states that "All power is inherent in people, and all three governments are founded on their authority and instituted for the peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of those ends, they have at times an unalienable and indefensible right to alter, reform, or abolish government in any such manner as they may think proper." To me, that states the authority for government or any office there comes from the people. Article 2 states that "The government, being instituted for the common benefit, the doctrine of non-resistance against arbitrary power and oppression is absurd, slavish, and destructive to the good and happiness of mankind." That states, to me, that states that people are not to sit idly by and just accept whatever government officials decide to do. If we feel something is unjust or acted upon outside their authority, we are to stand up and resist. The Tipton County Board of Education Policy, Boardship Code of Conduct, as mentioned earlier, states that you will not, or you will refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics. By your own estimates, last month's meeting was approximately only 10% of students were in masks. If only 10% of students were in masks, how is this not falling under the realm of special entrance, interests, or partisan politics? Item 4 states that I'll represent the board and the school district to the public in such a way as to promote both interest and support. You've definitely promoted interest, I don't think you're doing so well in promoting support. COVID has been a thorn in everyone's side for more than a year and a half. If you want a mask mandate, you have plenty of time to petition to give one the right way through legislative action. The last board meeting indicated that if parents would just do the right thing and keep their kids home when they're sick, we could avoid a lot of these issues. The attempt policies that we have make that difficult. From what I understand, students are allowed six parental excuse notes for the year. Many kids just need a day or two to recover from other ailments. My kids have bad allergies, and even when Medicaid sometimes develops a runny nose, which can lead to a sore throat and a cough that's usually gone in a day or two. As parents, why would we waste time or money to take the kids to the doctor when we know what the issue is? Also, how many families can't afford to run to the kids to the doctor every, for every sniffle they get? If you want parents to keep their kids home with these minor issues to help reduce the spread, then you need to address your tennis policies. The implementation of your mask mandate was a fiasco. As a parent, I had concerns, and I reported a couple of them to the district. Concern about safety and well-being of all the students, not just mine. I did not name any specific teachers or administrators. I simply reported a concern as a parent. Approximately two weeks later, I received a letter from a lawyer that legal action was being taken against me for defamation of all my teachers. I have been assured this legal action was the actions of the teacher and not the school district. However, as a parent, we should not, where we should be able to raise any concern we have for the safety and well-being of our children without fear of reprisal. As a parent, we should be able to raise any concern that we believe to have a possibility of truth behind it. It is a school district's job to look into the accuracy of the claims. With that said, people should not make random claims just because they're mad or looking to get someone in trouble. I will continue to bring my concerns to district regardless of threats, because it is my right as a parent. Just as is my right to decide whether or not my kids will wear a mask. We are not saying that you have to ban masks outright, leave it up to the parents that it should be. If you pursue, if you pursue further mask mandates, my children will not comply. They will attend school without being questioned or harassed. If you refuse to teach them, you will be violating their rights to free and fair public education, which will result in damages, allowing a path to the case hurt in the state of Tennessee. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gill?
No, and I apologize for interrupting, but, uh, as far as the authority, I mean, I don't, I can't speak for everybody here, but, uh, I can promise you, I wish this weren't a board decision, so.
It, I'm not gonna go into, I, I researched, I found who the authority lies in with. But out of fear of the appropriate authority enacting something that can be enforced, I'm not going to bring that to your attention. But I can tell you from what I've found, the school board has no right to institute a mask mandate.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Thank you.
Mr. Melissa Mann. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Would you state your name, address, and subject of presentation, I'm sorry?
Sure, uh, my name's Melissa Mann, and I live on 84 Bucy Drive in Tulsa. And I'm here to talk about the mask mandate.
Okay.
Um, so I've lived in Tipton County and worked at St. Jude Children's Research Hospital for 20 years now. My husband Jason and I have two kids in the Tipton County School System, Silas and Amelie. And I asked the speaker tonight to make a strong case for requiring masks, uh, for requiring teachers and kids to continue masking in our schools, and follow guidelines and recommendations put forth by every major scientific and medical institution in the US, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, to help keep our kids and our teachers safe at school this year. I know some of you shared some personal stories last month, and I'll share mine. I contracted COVID-19 last November, and I was fortunate enough not to need hospitalization. But I had a lot of symptoms, and some of them were long-lasting. Partly because of my own infection, but also because being a scientist is a passion and not only a profession. I've read a lot about the effects of COVID-19, including long-term effects. In my case, I had long-term symptoms, including shortness of breath, racing heart, confusion, and fatigue. Most of those lasted for about three months, and the fatigue continues. It's almost a year later. I had a relatively mild, maybe moderate case of COVID-19, and I don't want my children to face this. We don't know why some people recover after about two weeks, and 10 to 30% or maybe even more have lung open. I don't want to play a game of chance with our children's health. We know masks are safe for kids to wear. At St. Jude, we use masks to protect our community. It's not new for us, and anyone who's been immunocompromised or cared for someone who's immunocompromised has likely spent some time masking in public. We trust Laboner and St. Jude to care for our children when they get sick or injured. Why not trust them about what to do in this pandemic? Laboner has shared community recommendations for safe schools in this pandemic, and I urge you to follow them. These are the people who will probably be treating our kids if they become seriously ill. We will trust them then, let's trust them now. We all want what's best for our kids, and what is best for our kids is to be in school. But we can't insist on that while simultaneously refusing to take the measures that would make them safe. Many studies have been published over the past year showing that not only does wearing a mask protect people both from contracting and spreading COVID-19, but it can also result in better mental health in communities with more uniform mask-wearing, by reducing anxiety and providing a sense of empowerment. Since your last meeting, a large study was released showing the efficacy of masking. Over 340,000 people were followed in 600 different towns, and in agreement with many other studies, this one showed that proper mask use resulted in significantly fewer people infected with COVID-19. Mr. Clark, at the last meeting, you said you would be the least popular person in your home after your vote.
Yes, ma'am.
I can tell you that you were a hit in our house. Tears of relief were shed when I told my family of the decision of this school board. Board members, I can say without a doubt that your mask requirement improved the mental health of my family. And we know that proper mask use is one way to protect ourselves. We also know that when a large portion of a group indoors is not masking, it doesn't provide as much protection for those who do wear a mask. Even so, both of my children have been exposed to infected classmates, and neither were required to quarantine, nor have they contracted COVID-19 because they were wearing a mask. Silas and Amelie were very stressed about their exposure at school. And Silas, most especially, Amelie were questioned daily about their mask use by their fellow students before your requirement came out. At least weekly, a student intentionally coughs in Amelie's face. Good leadership can set a positive tone and temper that irresponsibility behavior. Your requirement for masks made life easier for my kids. Not only are they safer, they aren't distracted with constant questions from those who are not wearing a mask. Please also consider efforts to make school lunch safer. Amelie tells me that she's not distanced at all at lunch, and she tries to hold her breath while she takes her mask down to pick a bite. It's possible to, is it possible to allow kids to eat outside when the weather's nice? We know transmission levels are far less outside. I'd like to encourage you to take three steps at this board meeting and over the next month. First, please continue your masking requirement in schools. I urge you to adopt the clear benchmarks of infection levels outlined by Laboner for when masks are, should be required. Maybe make mask-wearing part of a school uniform when a respiratory illness is spreading in the community. Second, work to ensure that symptomatic kids and staff don't come to school. Simply reminding students and staff of the common and unique COVID symptoms, maybe with some signage, could prevent them from attending school when they're unwell. Third, I'd like some clear guidance on how quarantine is functioning in our school system. As healthcare workers, my husband and I know exactly what to do if we feel unwell or are exposed to a COVID-19 positive individual. We're not sure what to do about our kids other than to call the school nurse. Let's clarify these action points, let's keep masking in our schools, and let's do our part to help keep our kids safe.
Any questions?
I have a quick question for Ms. Mann. Uh, Ms. Mann, well, thank you for your presentation. We, no doubt, your children are consistently wearing masks in school. Do you feel that they are not protected by wearing their masks?
We know that the protection level goes down as the level of masking goes up.
Can I ask a quick one? At St. Jude, you work at St. Jude, right? Is there a timeline that they say, hey?
No.
How, for a typical child, how, how many hours a day might they spend in a mask?
I mean, it depends on where they are. For immunocompromised kids, they're generally masking whenever they're not in a closed room, just with sort of immediate family members. And their immediate family members generally mask whenever they go out of the mall.
Thank you, Ms. Mann.
And that was going on way prior to COVID?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tiffany House. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you please state your name, address, and, uh, subject of your presentation, please?
Tiffany House, 55 Astrid Lane Drive, Milton, Tennessee. Uh, mandate masks for all students. I am here this evening to express my concerns on Executive Order Number 84. At a press conference on Friday, September 3rd, Governor Lee stated that he was aware that Tennessee had the highest cases per capita, and that every parent has the right to send their child to school with a mask, and he hopes that they will do so. Yet, politics still seems to play a major role in gambling with the public health and safety of Tennessee residents. In a press conference in August, President Biden stated that this isn't about politics, it's about keeping our children safe, and that he will stand with any educators that take a stand against those governors by putting the children first. He also stated, "If you're not going to fight COVID, at least get out the way of everyone who, else who is trying." As of September 8th, the Tennessee Department of Health reported 336 cases amongst school-aged children in Tipton County within the last 14 days, with a grand total of 32,214 cases for the state of Tennessee. The American Academy of Pediatrics reported that as of September 2nd, over 5 million children have tested positive for COVID-19 since the onset of the pandemic, of which 252,000 were reported in the past week, making it the largest number of child cases reported in a week since the pandemic began. Children accounted for 26.8% of the nation's cases last week. The AAP also... The AAP also reported a 10% increase in cases since mid-August. The CDC states that safety precautions such as universal masking, social distancing, adequate ventilation, and hand washing should be practiced in K through 12 schools. Those layers of prevention would keep our schools safe and ensure that our children are learning in a safe environment conducive to learning, as mentioned as the belief of the Tipton County school system. I found scientific research that was published July 25th of 2021 in the weekly peer reviewed journal called Science. The research states that we find that most environments and contexts are under conditions of low virus abundance, where surgical masks are effective at preventing virus spread. Masks aren't especially effective in combination with other preventive measures like ventilation and distancing. COVID has become a part of our lives and we should act as such. This is not a time to divide, we need to unite and fight COVID. Please consider making masks mandatory for all students within our school. And thank you for your time and giving me an opportunity to speak.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mann, Ms. House, I'm sorry.
Mr. Patrick. Would you state your name?
Yes, sir.
Address and your subject of the presentation, please?
Yes, sir, my name's Patrick McDonar, resident 316 Bloomington Drive in Brighton. And subject of my presentation is the same as everybody else's out of touch. I graduated from Brighton High School. My older son is beginning kindergarten this year and I currently work as the manager of emergency department in Shelby County. I've heard some remarks today that indicated that perhaps the COVID was a made up pandemic to try to gin up fear and compliance among the population and that's just not the case. Younger and more people are getting sicker and dying, going on ventilators, going to the ICU than we saw even in the winter when it was that tight then. I've seen young, healthy, 30-year-old patients fit that have been in ICU on ventilators. We're putting them on pressers, we're flipping them over, we're trying to keep them. Children are getting ill unlike they were in the winter. They're getting critically ill, they're having to go to the Bonner. The hospitals are filling up and we ain't got the children hospitals like we have adult hospitals. There ain't five or six of them in Memphis to take everybody. Once the Bonner and Baptist childrens are full up, there ain't nowhere for them to go to get taken care of. I've heard that masks reduce the amount of oxygen and everything that people are getting and it's bad for it. We put our masks on, our N95s and warm them, put pulsar sensors on and it ain't dropped a point. That's not a scientific study or anything, that's just what we've seen ourselves. I just wanted to, you know, speak today and present that. So unlike some people saying, and I'm sure y'all are all aware, it ain't nothing made up, it's real bad, it's bad as it's ever been. You got people waiting for ICU beds in my ER, they've been in there a week waiting for a bed to go to just because everybody's full of them. I'm not gonna take up all your time, that's pretty much all I had. I just wanted to present the stuff I've seen. I don't have studies and numbers for you, but I see it every day and it's worse now than it has been at any point up to now.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Patrick?
I'm looking for Dr. Coles, I can't.
Okay.
Could you speak to the oxygen deprivation?
Yes, actually, I wish I'd have had more time, I would have discussed that. But let me give you scientifically, the SARS-CoV-2 virus is 100 nanometers in size. Carbon dioxide molecule was .33 nanometers in size. So the COVID molecule is 300 times larger. It's the size of an NBA size seven basketball versus a pedal. And so the very same people who use the logic, don't wear a mask because COVID can get through it, then say, don't wear a mask because carbon dioxide can. You cannot have it both ways. If a virus the size of an NBA size seven basketball can get through this mask without being in a respiratory droplet, you can't then say, wearing a mask traps the CO2, which is, what I said, 300 times smaller. With regards to what has been said about the oxygen and the carbon dioxide, it simply is not true. There are no studies that I've found.
You have a 53-page study. It's been, it's been put in the record. You can all study those 53 pages.
This was JAMA October of 2000. They took 28 people, 65 plus. Their oxygen level was 96.1% before, 96.5% wild, and 96.3% after they had on masks. Another study in the Internal Journal of Environmental Public Health, November of 2014. People, 20 to 30 years old, they exercised them with or without a mask. There was no effect on their performance, their pulse oxygenation, or their tissue oxygenation. With regards to the surgeons, they had put oxygen on the surgeons, their levels did not drop. In the American Thoracic Society Journal, they took 15 people with lung issues and 15 with CLTD, a chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. Their conclusion was, wearing a mask was no clinically significant change in end tidal CO2, how much carbon dioxide is in their lungs at your final breath, or blood oxygen levels after 30 minutes of wearing a mask. So to say that it affects your CO2 and your O2 is simply scientifically, medically untrue.
Thank you, Dr. Coles. We've heard everybody present tonight and they've been professional and we appreciate each one being here. For the mask, against the mask, or both ways, it doesn't matter. So we appreciate all of you being here tonight. You were very nice. Members of the board, as you know, at our last board meeting, we made the decision to require masks except for students to socially distance themselves. Following that, maybe on August 26th, 2021, Governor Lee entered an executive order that provided for a parent's right to opt out. In addition, we have allowed exceptions for medical excuses. So with that background, I hereby make this motion. I move that the Tipton County schools require all students and staff to wear face coverings until the board votes to end such requirement, provided however that exceptions be allowed as provided by executive order, medical necessity, other legal exceptions, or if students can socially distance. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Second, by Mr. Davidson. All those in favor say aye.
Could we discuss that?
Yeah, okay, yes.
Yeah, we might, yeah. Wouldn't, that sounded awfully lawyer, lawyerly. Could you put that in language that a former seventh grade social soc-
Okay, Mr. Vincent, if that's what you really want, okay.
That's what I want, I want it in normal folks, why don't you understand what the law-
I didn't quite understand.
Okay. Tipton County Schools requires all students to still wear a face, and staff to wear face covers until the board votes to end it.
The board to end it, hey.
Tipton County Schools require all students and staff to wear face covers until the board votes to end such requirement, provided higher than exceptions be allowed as provided by Governor Lee's order.
So that's-
Masks, let me finish, let me call.
Say it.
Medical necessity, other legal exceptions, or if they can socially distance.
Well, make our family mad.
So you're, basically what you're saying is you want to vote like we did last time?
Exactly.
Except and not be concerned about the governor's-
Yes, we'll have, we'll have to follow Governor Lee's orders. We'll be breaking the law if we don't.
He's saying that parents can still opt out.
We still have an opt-out.
He's saying that parents still can't opt out.
Well, I guess that's hard.
Yes.
And you also were saying that as long as they can't socially distance, correct?
If they can socially distance, they don't have to have their mask on.
They can take it.
Yes.
Dr. Coles or Dr. Burns, whichever one wants to field it. In most classrooms, how many of, how many of our classrooms are students able to socially distance?
It's hard.
It's 30 feet high.
30. 3 to 6, it's, and it's, 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 it's hard. One of the things that I think that a lot of teachers have been doing, which is okay, by the way, is that, you know, they put kids that are masked sitting closer to each other and kids that are unmasked sitting closer to each other. It helps with the quarantine process anyway. So, but you know, high school classes, it's a little bit easier, especially with some of the smaller numbers, they can spread out a little better even though they're bigger bodies. I would say elementary is a little tougher. Is that an accurate assessment, Sherri?
In some middle schools, you have a lot of, that's smaller classrooms, some middle schools, it's harder.
Are there any other questions before we vote?
Yes.
No, no questions will be asked. This is the board's meeting right now. Y'all have y'all's reason, okay?
What about, what about no mask, no mask mandate and just going by the government's order?
I've got this motion on the floor, we're not discussing.
I'm discussing that, why, why we're going to do that? And Governor basically going to proceed to leave, like we got it.
We've got a motion on the floor. We have to, we've got a motion on a second. Mr. Isaiah, a second.
Yes.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Laurie. Yes. Ms. Belinder. Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
No to a mask mandate. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Shigl.
Is it too late to add a question?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Carter.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Farrel.
I abstained last round, but I'm gonna vote no instead.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
That is.
Seven yeses and two noes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's passed.
Mr. Chairman, can you please pull your mask up since you voted yes on that?
I have to speak, sir. I should, I have to.
You won't speak and just-
We're socially distanced, okay? If they make another remark, you remove it, please. Thank you. Is there any other business, Dr. Coles, do you have anything else to say?
No, sir.
We were having a motion to adjourn.
I made the motion.